It looks safe.
Okay, Jay. Good. I'll call this meeting to order. Cecil Township Planning Commission, April 18th, 2024, 7:07 PM. First thing we need to do actually is amend the agenda. I need a motion to amend the agenda because the approval of the February minutes is not on the agenda.
I'll make a motion to amend the agenda to include the February meeting minutes.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion to amend the agenda. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right. Next item is the approval of those February meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion, we approve the meeting minutes of the February 15th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion to approve in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Abstain.
All right, next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the March 21st meeting.
I move to approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes dated March 21st, 2024.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Abstain.
Motion carries.
Although I would say Lauren's name is spelled wrong.
I apologize.
That's okay.
I will fix that.
Hey, I get all the spelling with my name too.
I don't even see it. Good eye. Jack, next item, review of previous decisions. Do you have anything to bring back to us from the Board of Supervisors?
I think you're going to talk about the ordinance tonight, previous decisions. Most everything was tabled from last meeting, so there's nothing new that actually went in front of the Board of Supervisors for the month of April.
Okay, that makes that one easy. All right, and in line with that, we'll go right into old business then. Our first item in old business is application 2024-0001 Dunn subdivision number one. Mr. Carriter.
This is just a 10-acre subdivision from 78-acre, 79-acre tract along Papp, Papp Road in Burnside. All of our, all the engineers' comments were addressed. Said I, all the engineers' comments were addressed. Bring it up. I don't know which one's which.
Joe, you have a previous letter on this, correct?
Yeah, all our comments have been addressed.
Perfect. No need to reference anything?
Nope, that ain't it. So it's this one.
I did see an email. I was a little buried today.
Yep.
Thank you.
There we go. There it is. So the 10-acre lot is at the lower left of the property. Yeah, there we go. That's the 10-acre tract. He's subdividing for his granddaughter to eventually build there.
Perfect.
Just out of curiosity, why, why, why a 10-acre parcel left for clean and green?
Yes.
Yeah, just for curiosity, the 10 acres is for clean and green then?
Yep.
Okay.
Any questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve application 2024-0001 Dunn subdivision number one.
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
I abstain.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kerry. Okay, item number two, application 2024-0004-275 Technology Parking Edition Site Plan.
Mr. Chairman, just so you know, we have not heard from them since the previous meeting, actually before that. They haven't requested it to be tabled, but our recommendation is to table tonight.
Is it going to be okay to be tabled? It's been a couple months now. Are they going to be outside the window there? Might be forcing their hands tonight.
I think, I mean, their extension started in March, I believe.
Was it?
I have three extensions that started in March. Yeah, so they have until June.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, we table application 2024-0004-275 Technology Parking Edition Site Plan.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to table in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. All right, next item is application 2024-0008 Koski-Barnes Subdivision and Consolidation Plan.
I believe everything is good with that. Just yield to Joe.
All of our comments have been addressed, and the plans in order for consideration. It's just a simple subdivision. There's a small piece of property that's being conveyed from Mr. Koski to Mr. Barnes.
Any questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve application 2024-0008 Koski-Barnes Subdivision and Consolidation Plan.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. All right. Moving right along. Application 2024-0009 Level Up Pickleball Camps Land Development.
Mr. Chairman, today, yesterday, we received a request from Level Up Pickleball's engineer to table that. We do have a, an extension, another one from March. It's good through, until June 15th, so we still have time.
I'll make a motion, we table application 2024-0009, the Level Up Pickleball Camps Land Development Plan.
I second the motion.
All right, we have a motion to table and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Okay, I do not see anything on the agenda for new business, is that correct, Mr. King?
Correct.
Okay. Ordinances and amendments. Cecil Township ordinance number 9-2011 Oil and Gas Development.
That actually is a follow-up from last month since it was tabled. That is the overall discussion and ultimately the update that Mr. Gretchen Moore is going to discuss.
Yes, so, and I thank you all for your patience. As you know, we got you an updated version today. I can't say that that's the final one that's going to be re-advertised, and I'll talk about some of the outstanding issues. But we wanted to get you something to start considering. Of course, we don't expect that you read everything today and have comments. The timeline for this so far is that there's another full hearing on May 8th. The Board of Supervisors will not be considering it for a vote until at least June, based on that. So there is time for you to be thoughtful and considerate and not, you know, not rush. But there were some significant changes that were made from the last hearing to this version. I can talk through some of those at a high level and then talk about, I think there's one issue that is still requiring an answer from the board in terms of where they want to go, and that is to the actual citing of the plans. And is it going to be with the setbacks? Is it going to be zoning district-based? So I can talk about that if that's what you would like to do, Mr. Chairman.
I think I would like to hear.
Okay. So you have a PDF version of the updated one. All of the changes are in redlining. I'll try to continue to do that so that you can compare very easily. Let's start in Section C. One of the concerns was that the oil and gas overlay district, if the board does indeed go with an overlay district, you know, it, it changes over time, right? It's based on structures being erected. So there's a line in there added that makes it clear, even though I think it would be intuitive, but it clear that as structures are erected, obviously that perimeter is going to change. Under Section C1, there was a concern raised, and the board wanted an addition of what is actually being approved. So there is some new language in here that talks about the application for conditional use pertains only to the number of wells identified in that application, which would be drilled in compliance with the timeframe that they set forth, which is later in Section 41. So if there's an application that comes in for eight wellheads, it would, they'd all have to be drilled within the time period. The starting would have to be within two, the grade of the grading would be two years after the application. And I'll talk about that more when we get to Section 41. And that the addition of future wellheads or future drilling, re-drilling, or re-hydraulic fracturing would require a separate conditional use approval. And I'll just go through some of the more significant ones. There are edits, of course, there will always be edits. Section 5B, as part of the overlay district portion of this, which is the one that's currently on the table, I can't say that's the one that the board will be propounding for the next advertising round. But currently, it's 1,000 feet from protected structures, 2,000 from schools, 250 from nearest property line, and there is a caveat that I will explain. Then there is a new addition related to lots that have obtained preliminary or final approval as part of a major subdivision or master plan. And the concern here was that those would also be considered for purposes of the setbacks. So if a, you know, major plan has been approved, but the houses haven't been built yet, the perimeter then be, include measurement from the property line of that subdivision as well. There is the owner, him or herself, can waive certain setbacks, but the owner cannot waive the setbacks set forth in Section 5C1, where it cannot, so the wellhead can be no closer to the protected structure on an abutting property than to the waiving owner or occupant's protected structure. So you can't cite a well closer to your neighbor and further away from your protected structure than to the neighbors, if that makes sense. So, you know, if you're, if you want to cite it 250 feet from the property line, which is 2,000 feet from your home, but it's 500 feet from the neighboring property, that would not be allowed. It kind of an interesting concept, it's kind of I think
I want to, I want to put a pin in that and come back and talk about that one for a minute.
Yeah, yeah, it's
But let's go through the everything first.
Yeah, yeah, and this, and we can talk about any of these because I know the board wants this board's input on some of these. That was kind of a new concept that we tried to word. There is, under Section 9, an addition of air monitoring. It's not regulation, but it's a monitoring component so that monitoring and reporting would be done at certain times during the vertical, horizontal, and hydraulic fracturing. There is also an addition of pre-drilling, post-hydraulic fracturing, and baseline water survey requirements that the board wanted to add. That's in Section 10. The geophysical exploration section in Number 11 has a lot more meat to it. And you can kind of read it there, and that's for seismic testing or other activities. The noise, dust vibration, and odor section in Section 19 has been updated with some more specificity. In particular, and this is a rather large change, you will see it here and elsewhere in the ordinance, both drilling and hydraulic fracturing at this point in this version of the ordinance are not allowed after 6:00 PM. Let's see. Some of these are not major. That would be also in Section 30, which is just a time restriction, straight, in a straightforward manner. Under Section 37, which is Oil and Gas Development Facility Section, because that's a little different than the well pad development, there's just a couple more conditions specific to those facilities, and then there is an incorporation of some of the other conditions that arguably might be applicable to facilities, but not all of the conditions because some just don't make sense when you apply it to a facility. So that's what happened in that section. Section 40 again reiterates this concept of needing new approval for future activities. Again, the concern there is that an application comes through, it is approved, it sits for a while, and then a couple wells are drilled, years later, a couple more wells are drilled, they come back and re-drill. And the concern that the board wants to address is that only those that are initially approved can be drilled with that applicant having to come back for conditional use approval because things change over that long course of time. That, that's, that's the concept that they're concerned about. What else? Oh, Section E is, I would call it significant change, so interaction with other ordinances. Basically, if, if conditions with, so the board feels that the conditions, because drilling could actually happen in residential neighborhoods under this ordinance, that these conditions are important, and that if a court would invalidate any of these conditions, then there would be a reversion and a, a different place where oil and gas drilling could happen, which in this section is the light industrial, heavy industrial with a 750-foot setback from protected structures. So that is currently, if there is an invalidation of a condition, that would then kick in. I might have that in there twice. So I think those are what I would call the more major ones. There's obviously, you'll see some other clarifications and changes in there. Everything's in redline from the last version that you saw. I think that does it.
Thank you. Do we want, Lauren, I know that you have some extensive comments on this. Do we, I, I think maybe we can start with your comments and, and work through those and then come back and work through. Does anybody have a problem with that?
Yeah, the, the March comments? Because we, we got the March ones last time.
So I
Or do you have new ones?
More of a story. We got a version or a, a, a version of the ordinance on April 10th to consider with the agenda, and that was the one that I reviewed and have new comments. Obviously, the version that
Do we have a version out April 10th?
That's a version that we, we saw from the, the township.
Jack, you want to?
The one I just read, or?
No, no, different one.
No, that was a previous one.
So, so we've gotten several different versions. I guess just a matter of process. It's, it's hard to, to really kind of offer constructive feedback in this ongoing process as we're getting new versions all the time. So I, I think that's, that's the process that makes it difficult for us that are trying to devote our time, in some cases after hours, to make sure that we have the residents' concerns in mind, but also we're following the, the appropriate process. So we did receive a version on April 10th last week with the agenda, with the other information.
Yeah, I'm not sure what would have been issued last week because I didn't issue anything until today.
Well, and, and even still, when, when you issue something to us today, and, and it's extensive, we don't have the opportunity to provide substantive feedback.
Sure, absolutely.
So, so the version that we got on April 10th from the township is the version that I, I, I drafted some comments. Now, a lot of them are still the same as the March comments. And obviously, with the redlines that you've indicated, the concerns still remain. And certainly, we'll be happy to continue the process of generating new comments, and certainly I want my fellow commissioners to weigh in as well. But it's, it's difficult to understand how we're supposed to function when we get new versions hours before the, the meeting and to provide adequate feedback.
I, I definitely understand that, and I can tell you, the board's been working hard to figure out, you know, where to draw those lines, which is why I don't even expect comments tonight. I would say, you know, consider them, you have time before June, if it even is voted on in June to
We'd like to understand, we have, we have three different maps that are floating out there that I've seen. There's the 1,000-foot map that we had in March. There's the 1,500-foot setback map that we saw last week. There was another map that was provided to us by Shannon, I think it was Shannon today, that, that had from schools. So we have three different maps floating out there, different versions of the ordinance floating out there that have been posted to the website. So Jason, I didn't mean to go off on that, but just, just simply by process.
No, no, I, I figured you were going to start there.
Yeah.
I really did, so.
Yeah, I, I do have written comments that I've shared with my fellow commissioners over the version that we've, that we received last week. You know, depending on what the setback map is, if we're going with the overlay district map, the 1,500-foot setback map, I think provides, it, it presents essentially a ban of future development in the township. So that's, that's something that's difficult to support blankly. I think generally speaking, it's hard for me to understand the favoritism of other commercial residential developments over oil and gas development in the fact that the overlay district, if that's the route that the township decides to go, can change. You know, the version of that map, it kind of changes the playing field. So I think when residential and other developments are proposed, there should be some transparency involved as far as what else exists around that area when it's being considered by the Planning Commission, us and the board. So there aren't surprises when, when houses go in and, and there's a permitted well site that's been approved that sits however many thousands of feet away from that development. You know, looking at it just granularly, I think the, the big issue that the residents have had are noise and operations. One of the recommendations that we had in March, and I think would be really helpful because I, I can't say that I truly understand, is the noise expert that the township has engaged to update the, the noise ordinance. I don't truly understand what the difference between DBC and DBA are. However, it appears to me that within the new noise section of the ordinance, they appear to be equal. So I'm, again, I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm a civil engineer, I'm not a noise expert, but I'd like to understand a little bit better of how that section would protect residents that are in areas that are being developed before, you know, we even consider action on that substantive section on noise. There are still several areas, and I have them in my comments, where the proposed ordinance, in my opinion, conflicts state and federal regulatory requirements and reporting requirements. I think that exposes the township to challenges for future development. I think for those areas, we really need to look hard to reference the appropriate statutes and regulations at the state and federal level and incorporate them by reference. And I think that provides adequate protection to residents in the township. I'll give an example, and this, this was in the March version, and this is currently in the April version, or at least all the versions that we've seen related to spills. Non-emergency spills at well sites, and non-emergency is not defined. They have to be reported to the township in four hours. That seems like a colossal waste of time if you have a spill that's a non-emergency that perhaps is captured by containment. The Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection requires an operator to report a spill that, that escapes containment within 24 hours, which would be an emergency spill if it escapes a containment. I think we should simply reflect what's already currently in statute that has adequately protected Pennsylvanians. I think the other ver, the other example that I'd like to put out there is with respect to well pad approvals, getting a grading permit from the township, I think, is fine. However, the Pennsylvania DEP allows an operator who files for an earth disturbance permit, which is essentially a grading permit, to have five years to develop the wells on that well pad before they have to terminate the permit for the well pad and restore it or submit for a one-time-only extension for that well pad. So I think whatever we put into the ordinance so that we're not further exposed from a legal standpoint needs to mirror the, the, the earth disturbance permit, earth disturbance permit that an operator would file for at the state. They are also filing for the, the number of wells that they plan to drill in that pad. The number of wells that they plan to drill in that pad, of course, has a time clock at the state level as well that they have to drill, and they're only allowed to have a one-time-only extension. They have one year to drill the well, and they're able to get a, a one-year extension. It's very hard to get another extension. So there is a temporal component that's built in at the state level that exists, and I think provides protection so that well pads do not sit there in perpetuity years and years and years where folks could come back without further future approvals to drill more wells in the pad. So my, my major concern with the version that we saw last week and the version we saw in March is that, is that we really need to scrub the document to make sure that we're not conflicting or overlapping state and federal regulations. I think that's the easiest way for the township to be exposed to legal action from those that potentially want to do, to develop private landowners' oil and gas rights in the township. And I, I have written comments for the version that we saw last week that I'll, with our chairman's approval to submit for the record.
Great, thank you.
Sure. Thanks, Jason.
Yeah, absolutely. Chris, do you have anything you want to? I'm going to give everyone a chance to make a statement first, and then we can go back and forth and start talking about some specifics.
Okay. Gretchen, thank you so much for being understanding of the fact that we're not going to be able to provide comments when we were just in receipt of this today. I, I would ask then if we would be able to ask the supervisors or consider for whenever it is that we will come to a point where we need to make a recommendation. for whenever it is that we will come to a point where we need to make a recommendation, one way or another, that we have more adequate notice to review and provide comments and feedback, because we all, I think, have intentions and heart to want to do that, but we just, thank you for understanding, we can't do that with just a few hours' notice.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Again, this is going to be a long process. It takes a while, this is obviously highly charged and the board has a lot of feelings and different differences of opinions. So, it is going to take a while. Obviously, you all have 30 days from whenever, you know, the final thing is to give the board comments. But at this point, it's more than 30 days. I can tell you, I told people at the hearing last time that we're going to re-advertise even if we don't have to. Obviously, this are, these are beyond minor changes, so this is definitely going to be re-advertised, which would happen next week sometime. So once that goes out, that's gonna be like the version for the next hearing, so you'll see a copy of that. I anticipate it'll look a lot like this, it might have some specific couple changes that I talked about. So that's what's happening next, so we'll be re-advertising, the next hearing is in May, on May 8th. And then the earliest they would vote is June, they might have another hearing, though. This is definitely going to take a while, it requires a lot of process, it's a, it's a big issue.
Certainly. And the other thing that I noticed as we were going through and you were giving a high level, the very end of this under, oh, what number is it? Forty-two, forty-two, forty-three, E, two, essentially states that natural gas development shall be a conditional use only in the light industrial and heavy industrial zoning districts in the event that any conditions set forth here and is invalidated in any manner. And I, I recall conversation regarding natural gas development, both on the upstream, midstream and downstream sides during the discussion for the comprehensive plan. And I know that there were some folks who were very strongly adamant in thinking that this particular development should only be happening in industrial. However, I know I brought up then, I can recall my words then and I will repeat them now for record, that these setbacks would make it impossible to have development if it was only allowed in industrial or heavy commercial and light industrial or heavy industrial. And like Lauren, I, I share the concern that there's wording in this document and I understand there's a lot of emotionally charged ties to that wording, but I would be very cautious for the township to not have wording that's going to cause or create litigation. I just don't want the township to be tied up in legal battles. I'm sure that would keep you gainfully employed for quite some time, but I'm sure you have plenty on your plate otherwise, that such wouldn't be required and that the township does not need to tie its money and finances and time. With that, when there's so much more that could be done in this township, particularly in the parks.
Thank you.
So again, thanks Gretchen for all your work, it's pretty intensive with all the, all the changes and versions and I appreciate the comments already made from Lauren and Christie and I'm materially in agreement with everything they've said, so I won't repeat that, except that I, I really think the most important issues are zeroing in on an exact map and making sure that we're all talking about the, the same areas and, very important, and that we don't contradict or make various laws more restrictive or change any, any existing laws. So, those are, those are the biggest, the biggest items that I would have also. So, thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. And I'll make sure that obviously the board gets all of these comments.
And of course, any, any undefined terms that need to be cleared up, you know, and definitions. But we would have to look at all those, so.
I guess my biggest concern is contradicting the state law and it seems like the biggest thing is the, the setback. So are we tied to this thousand and fifteen-hundred-foot setback, setback, or can we recommend a 500-foot setback?
Yeah, I mean, you as the planning commission can make whatever recommendations you want, yeah, and-
Yeah, that just seems to be the largest issue, the setback.
I, I would say the setback issue dictates future development. The setback issue does not address the current issues that are being experienced by the residents. So we have to keep in mind that, that, well, you know, we're, we're looking at future development. The existing concerns at noise and operation would still be of concern to the residents, so I, I say that in sympathy to the residents. Fifteen-hundred-foot and I think a thousand-foot make it very difficult for any future development to occur and any private landowners within the township to safely develop their own mineral rights, which could create challenges from a legal standpoint. It's been documented that 500-foot setback at the state level is safe, it's been 500 feet since 2012. It's the most stringent setback in any of the gas-producing states from natural gas wells. More stringent than Ohio, West Virginia, Texas, obviously. There's a lot been documented on what exactly happens at 500 feet during operations that I think is fact-based. So certainly I'm always, given that this is a state-permitted activity, that's where, where, where I, I tend to agree, that's just because I, I look at things based on science, but you know, it's, it's something that it's, it's a hard issue to, to really consider. So we have to think about what kind of a recommendation we want, want to make.
All right. And I appreciate everybody's comments, feedback. Gretchen, you've been a great help here in going over those red line items with us. I, I'm gonna say something that's gonna probably initially sound a little counter to, I think, pretty much what everybody else has said, but I'm not necessarily saying I disagree. But everyone's talking about, you know, state and federal standards and not- I, I certainly think, agree that we should not be contradicting state or federal standards. But in, in, in my profession, as a, as a safety professional, you know, it's, it's very common for, you know, the federal, the feds are gonna set a standard, but that is considered a minimum standard and that states have the, have the ability to, have to adopt the federal standard at a minimum. And they can just accept the federal standard as is, or they can go above and beyond it. And then beyond there, as you move down through levels of government and even into private industry, parties have the option and the ability to go above and beyond. So while I agree that we should not be contradicting state or federal standards, I don't think that, that automatically means that we should, that we should not consider any opportunities to maybe set a higher standard and to, and to create a, a safer and, and, or a, a standard for our community that reflects the actual concerns that our residents are seeing in this community and are able to adequately meet and address those problems. You know, so I'm, I'm not afraid to go above and beyond those standards. I agree we don't, we should not be contradicting. Gretchen, I, I, I think this kind of goes along with what Barbara was saying. As we move through each version of this ordinance, I, I'm gonna request that each time that we get an updated ordinance, that if, if we're talking setbacks at all, that we also get updated overlay maps.
Absolutely, yeah, that makes so much sense.
The numbers mean nothing if we can't see it.
Right, right. And I know, I know Joe's office did prepare for the last hearing, you prepared the thousand-foot, the thousand, two-thousand from schools. And that was displayed and then, I know there's been a bunch of maps flying around, I don't know, I think, I don't know if people are just exploring what it looks like. So I haven't seen, I, I know that they've been flying around, but I don't, but in terms of what's been going in the ordinance, at this point, it's the thousand, two-thousand, with the addition of the new, new plans, which, again, I don't know if that impacts the overlay right now at all, because I don't know if there are any approvals, but that's the main addition right now. Yeah, I know, I, I, there was a fifteen-foot, I don't know that that was considered or is in play right now.
It, it's up on the website, so to me, it's in play.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, if it's, there's, there's different, so that, that creates the confusion.
Oh, well, you know what, I think at the last hearing, Jack, at the last hearing, didn't, was, the chairman requested that you just put all the maps up so people could see.
I believe Dan used the fifteen-hundred but didn't provide it and then I had it requested and the chair okayed it to be put up, so that was a recent addition to our website.
Okay, yeah.
You know, and then, you know, one of the things I noticed, you know, in the ordinance, we're talking about a thousand feet, then two-thousand from schools. And again, I, without having a map in front of me to see it, you know, we have the fallback, the new fallback here in Section E about, you know, light industrial and heavy industrial with a 750-foot setback. Do we have any situations where that would, where school would now be with, where an activity would take place in an industrial zone and place it within 2,000 feet of a school? Because that seems kind of contradictory on, wow, that's-
What I, what I put up here is the fifteen-hundred foot and you'll notice that there's two areas with an overlay there and there.
Yeah, yeah, the fifteen-hundred foot, you can see sterilizes most of the township. And that's from all buildings, that's what it says, all buildings. I'm not sure what all buildings mean. Yeah, so protected structures, it was in the ordinance right now and protected ordinance, or protected structures is defined. All buildings could be a shed, could be anything.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of question there, but that was just one thing that I, that I, that jumped out at me was, you know, hey, you know, there's, there's this fallback of dropping a 750, but there's an obvious desire by the township, by the board of supervisors to provide that extra layer of protection for the schools that if we have the fallback for the 750, I don't see it as being an issue of still having that protection for the schools in there, but maybe it is, I don't know, like, without a map.
I think a map would be very useful, I believe Joe's office is working on that map. That's gonna be instructive.
And then, so, Section 5C, 5C1, right? With the, where an owner-occupant authorizes a waiver.
Yeah.
I'm a little confused about what we're going for there because, I mean, I understand that someone can waive drilling within the protected distance from their own structure. But I don't read anything in here that gives me the permission to authorize it from anybody else's structure. So the additional language about saying that the wellhead shall be no closer to a protected structure on any abutting properties to the, than to the waiving owner-occupant's protected structure, doesn't make sense to me. Because it would still have to be, I can say, hey, yeah, you can put it 500 feet from my house, but 500 feet from my house is still within 1,000 feet of his house, he would have to waive it as well. Like, it's, it's automatic in there, like, I, I'm not sure what we're-
Yeah, and I think we'd have to play out a scenario, if there were a scenario where someone was sighting a, a well that would be further away from their home and closer to a neighbor's home than from their home, even if it's within the other perimeter of 1,000 feet from that other protected structure. I think that's the, the concept that they're trying to grasp, so. I don't know how, if there is an example where this would really play out, because you need a lot of, both sites would have to have a lot of land.
I mean, I could see a scenario where your place, where I'm authorizing a well on my property, it's outside of 1,000 feet from my property, but it's, and outside 1,000 feet from his buildings, but it's closer to his buildings than it is to my buildings, but if we're outside 1,000 feet, who cares? But inside 1,000 feet, like, I can authorize it to be within 1,000 feet, but he's still protected
Yes.
by the 1,000 feet, so, so there's no ability for me to put it closer to his house than the mine, unless he gave the same waiver, at which point it would be a moot point.
Right. And in this point, so to hear of the waiver, I guess you could think of, some people can waive to put it closer to their house, right? That's typically why you have the waiver, right, because I want to put it closer than what is allowed. But the concept here is if someone's really not utilizing the waiver as much as they're saying, well, I want to put it as far away from my house as possible and it's now closer to the neighbor's protected structure. So it's within the waiver section, but they're basically saying, you can waive this and put it wherever you want, but yet you can't put it closer to a neighbor's protected structure than to yours.
But they could put it up to 1,000 feet from a protected structure, right? They wouldn't need a waiver.
That's the part I'm confused about.
Yeah, I'm confused on where you would actually be impacting the-
It's, I-
I hear what, I, I think the issue is that the, the ordinance as it's written is focusing on the owner-occupant authorizing, we should flip it so that the, so that it goes back to the driller. If they want to put it within 1,000 feet, they have to get permission, a waiver signed by all protected structures, the owners of all, and occupants of all protected.
But, but that would only be if it's, if it's closer than 1,000 feet.
Within 1,000.
If it's not, if it's not, then you just go by the map.
Right. That's what I'm saying, if they want to operate within 1,000 feet.
I, I'm confused by the whole stipulation, I almost think you just see map and then if you want to authorize them to, to build the pad on your property closer than 1,000 foot, that's your own thing, because you're still observing the overlay district map at 1,000 feet, because you're not, it wouldn't be impacting anybody else.
Well, I think there needs to be language in there stating that a homeowner, that a property owner-
For their own.
Can put it closer, can, can go outside of the overlay map for their own.
And again, the state has similar language where you could put it closer to 500 foot to your house if you wanted to. They have waiver forms, they have, they have created this, this mechanism as well, where you're not impacting somebody else's property.
Yeah, I, I would say that, I, I see what we're going for, but I think the way to clean it up is to flip it so that it's written as a requirement on the, whoever's trying to initiate the drilling activity and not the owner or occupant.
Okay, that's a good comment.
Makes sense?
Yeah.
You know, I was thinking more about the concept of schools and I think we have to be really careful with that, too, that there's, if, if we're making any reference to schools, that there's an ironclad definition, because you have preschools out there, you have, you have all sorts of schools, so to speak, and I mean, is the concept to protect a large amount of students? You have libraries, you have, I mean, why are we targeting schools and particularly at such a material distance as opposed to the other setback?
Yeah, I do believe schools is an existing defined term in the zoning ordinance, but that is a good comment, you know, should it, would have to look at what the definition says first and foremost, but, and whether it's schools just because it's, it's a large concentration of children or, you know, I don't know if there are other structures they might want to add greater protections for, but it seems like schools is a logical one just because of a large concentration of children, although they're not there all the time, so, but they are there for a good portion of, of a day, for a large portion of the year, so.
No, I was just thinking that it could get too, like, voluminous with, with the concept of a school.
Yeah, and I, and I don't see schools defined in-
It, it's in the regular, so this is part, this is part of the zoning ordinance, so-
Defined.
Yeah, like, your zoning ordinance has pages and pages and pages of definitions, so I think we'd have to go back to the definitions page, look at schools, see how that, and I just don't have it with me right here.
You'd have to watch how it's defined, because I know that in other townships and in the state, it's just blankly defined as the school's property. The school's property then could be, you know, your cross-country course, your paths, your, and then by the time you build in a setback from all of the school's property, not the building itself, then you've really taken up a lot of, a lot of land.
That's, that's actually Walt, I'm, back when Walt was on the commission, him and I had that conversation about hunting setbacks from, from schools, because it's not real clear in the way the state law is written on, is it- From, from schools, because it's not real clear in the way the state law is written on, is it the school structure or the school property line?
They've been challenged.
Football fields and playgrounds and all that.
Cross-country courses, which are a linear feature, because you're all the way up into the, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah.
That is a good point, I'm just seeing if I can find that for you guys now, but we can keep talking.
Probably got my pages all discombobulated now, uh, there's, there's a lot here that obviously, sections nine, ten, eleven, I'm gonna have to do a lot of reading, that, that's all new stuff, so, I don't even have.
One of the things, and it's really simple, it should be simple, the new definitions that are related to the industry really should have the backing of acceptable scientific definitions, and I commented on this in March, the definition of fracture or fracturing, commonly furtus hydraulic fracturing, is wrong. I mean, there, there are definitions on the EPA's website, the DEP's website, so for some of these definitions that are relatively new, and even the ones from the old ordinance, they really should be updated for, or acceptable, scientifically acceptable definitions, or we should just reference where they came from.
No, I, I, I definitely, that was, when your very first notes came out.
Yeah.
Last month, that was the, like, first one jumped out at me, I said, that is one of the most common sense things that I've heard yet in this conversation.
Thanks, Jason.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, definitions are important, and if you have any in particular that you think are, like, better, feel free to send them over, say, this source is, you know.
U S EPA's oil and gas website, and definition for hydraulic fracturing, I think, yeah.
I was at a question in, where are we at here?
Lauren, back to your definitions, so there are definitions in section B, and you're questioning the validity of those definitions.
I don't, I don't.
Updating those, or adding more.
We, we want them to, to be.
Terms.
Yeah, we want the, the terms that are defined to be acceptable, or to be referenced from someplace EPA, you know, other regulatory agencies that have an accepted definition for an oil and gas industry term. The other comment that I had, and, and, and I'm sorry, Jason, to interrupt you.
No, 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 go ahead.
The industry is not allowed to have large waste impoundments anymore, when they updated the state regulations in 2016, those were banned, so I don't really think that we need to talk about those, or at least have them in the updated ordinance, and Gretchen.
Yeah, I think we struck.
Seventy-eight A is easier to find at the state level to show that all of those structures that hold water for the industry are in above-ground containment facilities now, they don't dig those big pits anymore, they're, so those kind of went out about eight years ago.
Yeah, I, I think we, we struck them, or just said they're prohibited, because if they do come back, and let's say they decide to do them again, we just said they're prohibited.
Okay, so I don't, I don't see that in the version that you.
Uh, twenty-four?
Oh, I'm looking at the definition, the waste impound, water impoundment waste?
Yeah, they, they define it there, then over in twenty-four.
Okay.
It, it just states that those are prohibited.
You should, you should reference the state regulation. In both, if you're gonna keep the terms, so Dave, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you there, but yeah, I think we need to sharpen the pencil and look at, at making sure that some of these terms are referenced from somewhere that EPA, DEP.
No, I definitely agree with you on that one. Uh, I am, and, and maybe I, I just missed it so far, but like, I'm looking in thirty, which was added in, or, or changed substantially.
Yep.
For about, you know, under those circumstances, any operation activities work-related, oil, gas, and, and it might be addressed elsewhere, but what about emergencies? I don't see a provision in there to allow work, you know, to occur in the event of an, of an actual onsite emergency.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I, I would agree with that, Jason, I think there needs to be exceptions, I also think, as far as exceptions, is once you start hydraulically fracturing a well, that's the completion process, that's not the drilling process, you can't, you can't physically stop that process, it creates a safety issue, so there needs to be an exception for that process during the actual completions of the well.
And I know that was added not just there, but also under, let me find the right spot, I think it's nineteen, nineteen-two B, A and B, they added drilling or hydraulic fracturing, and, and talking about noise levels. I think the purpose of that was to stop fracturing from occurring during those nighttime hours, right?
Hy- hydraulic fracturing is not going to be the, the, the activity that creates the, the noise, it's the drilling, the concern, the supposed concerns over noise, but hydraulic fracturing, once you start, it's really not safe to stop midway through, you gotta, you gotta, you know, go as many stages as you have planned to go.
I think.
Sorry, Jason, since you were just in that section, I wanted to check, are we able to see the report from the noise expert that the township hired?
Yeah, so he did a report when he was called in, when there was a complaint, it wasn't a report on, like, the ordinance.
That, that the township had said, hey, let's talk with them particularly regarding DBA and DBC, because I don't have an understanding of that fully, and I would love to, to hear and to read what they had to say.
And I would agree with that, that was one of our recommendations from March, is we'd like to see the report, we want to have this guy talk and teach us about what DBA and DBC is, I, I can't even begin to start to make an educated interpretation on whether or not the proposed ordinance makes sense.
And so he didn't write a report, just so you're clear, like, for the township about the ordinance, he did a sound study at Augustine, I believe, when there was a complaint, and then we talked to him as well and consulted with him, but the main difference with this ordinance is they're not set numbers, it's all based off ambient. So there's so many, you know, decibels above ambient that is allowed, which, so it's going to be different for, it might be different from where you are compared to somebody else, so that's the major difference, it, it fluctuates based on what ambient is, as opposed to saying previously, it was like ambient or fifty-five decibels, which was just like a number that's chosen, so that's the main difference.
Well, I think normal conversation, like what we're having now, is sixty decibels is the average, so I, I do know that, and that's like, as far as DBA is concerned, but I don't know anything about DBC to say, hey, it's, like, is it the same?
It's, it's not.
Okay.
It's, and, and, and I, I'll just lead this with, I'm not an expert in, in sound myself, I, I've, I've done quite a bit of sound, of noise monitoring, but we're focused on the OSHA standards, which is focused on DBA, so that's what we're focused on, I do know that, you know, that there are different scales, and, and they're going to, I, I understand what everyone's talking about right now, why they want to look at DBCs, but I, I can't tell you, I, I'm, I'm not knowledgeable enough to be able to explain it to everybody here, what the difference is. But yeah, you're right on the, on the, on the noise levels, I mean, when I'm teaching about noise protection, and I'm teaching to a room of sixty construction workers, and I'm projecting out to the room, I'll pull up my phone and my noise app and have DBA scale on it, and I'm holding, and, and I hand it to someone in the back room, and I'm projecting my voice, and they're telling, and they're saying what the noise level is, I bring it up next to me, and I'm projecting my voice, and everyone agrees it's the same, and the person next to me is reading it, and it's above eighty-five decibels, I was like, so if we do an eight-hour training, I'm actually, my voice is a hazard to myself, which always gets a laugh out of the safety guy in a safety meeting, you know, but it's understanding how, how that sound goes, so DBA, DBC, they are different, I can't explain the difference, but I do think that it is important to look at both.
And I think we need to understand that before making substantive changes to the ordinance, including them both.
Yeah.
Can I interrupt a second, if you'll notice up on the screen, I did post the, uh, March twenty-eighth independent, uh, report, it was for both Augustine and Schultz well pad by Thornton Acoustics and Vibration, that was the township-sponsored one, so that's, that is on our website, let's show you exactly where it is. It is under services, natural gas expiration information updates. If you scroll down to bottom, it's the twenty-twenty-four Augustine Schultz well pad community noise monitoring report dated March twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four.
Thanks, John.
Yeah, again, and Gretchen, just going along with all that, I, um, noise and prohibited activities and whatnot, I, I just, overall, either we need to address emergencies in each of those sections, or we just need a separate section for saying that, you know.
Emergency override with how that's defined, yeah.
Yeah, and, and again, we'll have to define what an emergency is, you know.
I, I have to imagine that's defined elsewhere in the ordinance, and maybe I'm just giving the ordinance too much credit, what an emergency is.
Well, sometimes you don't want to define everything, too, you have to be careful that, you know, yeah, but, um, I understand what you're saying.
Right, right, but I, I don't think we necessarily want to put, I don't know that we necessarily want to put it back into the hands of the well operator to define what an emergency is. Is it, you know, is it an operational emergency, is it a financial emergency, I mean, there's, it's, it's a very broad.
Yep.
Definition.
Yeah, and, and Jason, they're required within an approved, a state-approved emergency response plan to define the operator, define what an emergency is, so, and those are held on the site, at the well site, at the facility, so you can look at their emergency response plan and, and understand, okay, in this emergency, we contact the state police, PMA, whoever else, they have a documented plan that's reviewed and approved by the state for concurrency with regulations and legislation, and coordinated with the township.
Right, so we could reference back to those, and in those specific emergencies, then we can say, yeah, you can work twenty-four-seven until the emergency is rectified.
Correct.
Or the noise, you know, the, no noise restrictions until you get the emergency.
Or even if it's a spill.
Right, whatever it may be.
Yeah.
I guess the last, last thing for me is, and, um, and, and I know Lauren and I talked about it just briefly before we got started, but, um, you know, are we, are we trying to reinvent the wheel here? Are there work in ordinances that have held up to legal scrutiny that we can, that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we've reviewed almost every ordinance in this area, and there are a wide variety, some are even more strict than this, and not all of them have been challenged, we have particular court cases, obviously, we can rely on, and then there's the board's decision that it might want to test certain things, so the, I mean, the board's ultimately deciding which, you know, how far it wants to go in all of these areas, but there's a lot of resources out there, and, you know, we've looked at a lot of them, and then, so it's a variety of things, it's court cases, it's acting ordinances, and then it's what the board, you know, wants to choose in, out of those existing things, or create new things, so it's, yeah.
Yeah, I just, I think sometimes, some of the things I know have, you know, a lot of times we raise concerns about, about internally, within the township, will this hold up to legal scrutiny, but we know that there are things that already have held up to legal scrutiny, so if one of our goals is to create an ordinance that's gonna hold up to legal scrutiny, then obviously that's where we start, is looking at those tested, um, ordinances.
Yep.
Dave, anything else?
No, I'm good.
Barbara?
Mr. Sites, do you have anything?
I have no comments.
Very wise man.
Thank you again, Gretchen.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome, and thank you, thanks for the comments, like I said, I'll draft them up, make sure the board of supervisors has them, and, um,
Jason, is there a comfort level in passing these down to, this is what I had emailed to.
You can load up every, yeah, if you want.
Yeah, I have a copy of.
Well, that's from March, I have ones from.
Oh, okay, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, I mean, absolutely a comfort level, and it's, it's your, your thoughts.
You're the chair.
I know, I know. Yes, it, it, it does, it goes a great way to putting all your thoughts in, in one place.
Thank you.
I don't know if I have anything else to question or discuss at this point in time, I think we have a lot of questions, I think I have some more homework to do myself, I think a lot of us do.
Oh, yeah.
So, and, uh, who knows, maybe next, maybe in another week, we'll have a whole new set of.
Sounds like we will.
Yeah, and I don't even know if they, it can be turned around that quickly, and if they're in agreement on, so, you know, there'll be more than one version, I'm just making a bet here, that there'll be more than one additional versions.
Okay. There's no official action we have to take on this, it was just this.
We, we officially tapered it the last month.
Okay, so we do have to officially, officially table, okay, okay, so do we have a motion to table then?
I'll make a motion to table the proposed revisions for the Cecil Township oil and gas ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion to table in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Any correspondence or announcements?
Not right now.
Any additional discussion, anybody from the commission wants to bring up? The public?
Yes.
Thank you for your patience.
Oh, you're welcome, just one quick question, you mentioned that with the new ordinance.
I'm sorry.
Kelly Sturdivant, thirty-sixty Solomondry Drive, with the proposed new ordinance, you would require them to begin drilling within two years, um, there, there's, is there anything like that in the current ordinance? Because I know there's at least one well that's, the permit is, I think, over two years old, and drilling hasn't started, would somehow that apply to, to this existing permit, old permit, or?
So under, so currently, and the provision that's in this ordinance mirrors the provision on expirations generally for conditional uses, so it's not different, and our condition for, the expiration on conditional uses states that I think you have to commence within, they changed it recently, they get to commence within a year or two years, they can seek, is it two, and then they can, they can seek an extension, I think you can get a one-year extension, but it's based off a trigger, so when you're, when you're building a building, you know, it's, you have two years to get that building permit, now for oil and gas drilling, there's not a natural trigger, so what is proposed here that's a trigger point be the grading, the grading permit that they get, right, because that's a trigger that they have to come get from the township, and that actually, I believe Judge Lucas did look at that, because that was a condition on one of the well pads, and I think he was fine if it was from grading, I'm not, I think if it was from drilling, it wasn't okay, but from grading, it was okay, which is what, how it's currently in the ordinance, if that makes sense.
So currently, if somebody graded the area and hasn't done anything for maybe even five years, it's still an act of permit?
The, the, again, the state dictates the permit for the well pad, the conditional use approval is dictated by the township, at the state level, their permit is good for five years, and so they need to do something with that pad, on that pad, within the five years that that permit is good, after that five years, they can seek one extension, and then they have to restore that pad.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second the motion.
I second the motion.
8:17 PM.